All right. Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to utter. Today is Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is also our first meeting of the new year. All board members are present in the boardroom along with our superintendent. And we do have a person to introduce sitting to my left. We of course have Katie. But Katie is helping to transition our new executive assistant, America Sullivan. So America is, this is her first meeting, her first week and her first meeting. So we'd like to welcome you, America, and thank you for joining our team. With that, I would like for Mr. Pack to lead us in the pledge and do the land acknowledgement.
Welcome to me just to the flag of the United States of America. As to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
And thank you very much. And that brings us to item A three, which is the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is moved and sec moved by member Jacob, second by member Higgins, to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any opposition to approving the agenda as presented? Any opposition? Seeing and hearing none. The agenda is approved. And now we are on item B, which is our student report. Student representative, Mr. Pack, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I would like to wish everyone a happy new year. Hope everyone had a restful and wonderful holiday season, and I am very glad to be back here. And hope that you are all adjusting to the, or at least your students are adjusting to the early start time again. Now to business, our next student advisory board meeting will be taking place next Tuesday in this room. And it's a AM meeting, so that would be eight fifteen to ten fifteen. And we have four resolutions on the table ready to be discussed, and I am very excited to report back to this board what we decide and what we discussed. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Yes, Member Donley.
Thank you. I'm curious what's on the agenda for the four resolutions.
So the first resolution is actually the resolution I, oh, is it? So I believe the first resolution that we began discussing last meeting was the student representative resolution. So we're just seeing what ASD's thoughts is on that issue of the Matsu School Board. And their student rep, we also have one, I believe, changing the weighted scores of the middle college classes. So that is actually one that we're going to discuss. We'll also discuss, I believe. I'll have to get back to you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Pack? Okay, seeing in here, seeing no other hands. We do appreciate you, Joshua, in all that you do. So it looks like I did miss one of my items under A. I'm gonna just take the liberty to go back. It's just the opening statement to properly welcome everyone here. And to thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. We want, the board thanks our students, parents, teachers, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. And so now I'd like to circle back to our military report, Colonel Eric Dunn. Welcome, Colonel.
Try it this way so y'all can see me. Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Colonel Eric Dunn. Thank you for having me out here tonight. I'll be very fast. Happy New Year. We're excited to give all of our children back to you. We enjoyed them for a few weeks. And for the military, luckily, many of us were able to take some time off during the holidays, so that was nice as well. I just want a couple of thank yous. One, I got to personally visit Bartlett and Eagle River High Schools. Two of the ones nearest to the military installation. A lot of our high school students go to those schools. And I was very impressed. I want to thank principals Prince and Helvey for hosting us. Both of them and their staff took a lot of time out of their schedules to tour us around the school and just talk really excitedly about all their offerings. And I was really impressed. I grew up in South Louisiana, and I loved my high school, but it doesn't hold a candle to what those two schools have and what I know many of the schools in the Anchorage area have. So thank you to those principals and thank you just to all of you for allowing us to do that sort of thing. It helps us when families are moving in and new leadership is coming to the base. It helps us to be able to articulate just the great things that happened in the schools here in the district. Also, with the remaining sixth grades going over to middle school next year, we've been guiding families to the frequently asked questions that you all post on your website. It's been very helpful. That is very well done, and it's helped to answer a lot of questions. Many of our families coming in are coming from areas that already do that, so they're fine, but then some don't, and it's a new thing. It's a new thing for the families here. So thank you so much for making that easy to understand for our military families. And then the last thing, we've been, we've had folks from our base participating in the Academies of Anchorage convening sessions held this school year. Thank you for letting us be a part of that. We're excited for what that's going to bring once everything is in place. And we're here to help anything that you need from us. Other than that, thank you for your time tonight. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions for Colonel Dunn? Seeing none. We do appreciate, oh, yes, Member Lessons.
You spoke beautifully about our schools that you visited. Were there anything, like what in particular did you put in your pocket?
So one thing that stood out to me in particular at Eagle River High School was their J Reserve Officer Training Program. It was amazing. Like, I was just blown away by how excited the team and the cadre is there and how robust that program is. It's one of the best that I've seen. I also really just liked the passion that both principals had for their high schools. And just how supportive they are to the military. I mean, they really wanted to partner with us in any way that we can help them, and they can help us.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Colonel. And I also want to just put a shout out to Master Sergeant Guzman and Adele. And I forget the other, she runs the center on base. They're amazing. And so we do get to, at least I get to meet with them quarterly. And so we do appreciate the military's presence and input in all that we do. So thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Have a good night.
Okay, so we're gonna move now to item C on the agenda as goal monitoring. Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam President. Give the team a second to pull up PowerPoint. There. All right, here we go. So today's technical report will focus on our math proficiency goal and interim goals. Our formal conversation will take place at our next board meeting. So looking at the slide in front of us, it shows the proposed rewrite of the math proficiency goal that the board's currently considering, and we recently discussed. We also noted that we're still awaiting test scores from last April from the state that can further inform our conversation. Also, our overarching goal focuses on eighth grade math proficiency. And one of our interim goals would monitor math growth, sorry, map growth for grades three through five. This proposed interim goal, which is aligned to the proposed goal revision, is to increase the percent at or above benchmark to sixty-five percent by spring 2028. And again, that is pending the board adopting the goal at the top. Next slide. This slide shows progress to date on percentage of students in grades three through five that are at or above benchmark on the map growth assessment. The graph shows historical trends in the solid line, and the dotted line represents the annual targets. The chart at the bottom breaks down the percent of students at or above benchmark by year, and it breaks the data down by fall, winter, and spring snapshots. This slide shows the map growth grades three through five broken down by individual grade level. The columns provide insight on student participation as well. And on this next slide, you'll see the data disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and student subpopulation, including gender, at the request of the board. And we can compare winter to fall data using this table. So moving along, these next few slides pertain to interim goal two point two, which would be map growth data for grades six through eight. The interim goal is to increase the percent of students at or above benchmark to sixty-five percent on the map growth assessment. So very similar to before, this is, this chart shows the same data, except this data is for grades six through eight, and the previous one focused on elementary school data specifically. And then again, this slide breaks down the map growth data six through eight by grade level, and it compares the fall and winter snapshots. I do want to note that we do have an elementary cohort of sixth graders on this chart, as well as a secondary cohort of sixth graders on the chart. And at our next meeting where we have our formal conversation, we can discuss more the differences in the data based on a sixth grader being at a middle school versus elementary. This is something that we've discussed at the past when it comes to proficiency, but we'll come to the table again, prepared to speak as to why there are differences by cohort. And this next slide, again, similar in format to the previous one, but this is data for grades six through eight. It disaggregates it by race, ethnicity, and student subpopulation. And then the next few slides detail the strategic plan to increase performance in math. So on this first slide, it states our learning and instructional focuses at the top. And then at the bottom, it provides some details on the approach to improvement towards our math proficiency goals. And then on this slide, we'll leave the board with, it lays out the progress to date on the five strategic pillars of the plan to increase math achievement. That includes pillars related to curriculum, instruction, professional learning, data discussions, as well as our multi-tiered systems of support. This slide is specifically for grades three through five. And then moving to this slide, this shows the same pillars but for our plan for grades six through eight and that strategic plan. And that concludes the technical report, and we look forward to our conversation at the next board meeting where we can dive in with our academic experts to discuss what we can do to move the needle on math proficiency.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. We look forward to our discussion on the twenty-third regarding the math proficiency goals, goal, and interim goals. All right, so this brings us to our first hour of public comment. So now is the time to hear from our public. We welcome your comments, which are very important to us. The board has set aside an hour at the beginning of its meeting for those who have signed up to give public comment. Those not heard during the first hour will be heard at the end of the agenda. There is a section on the agenda for those. This is an opportunity for board members to listen and for members of the public to inform the school board about their views. Please note the following. All public comments are limited to three minutes. The timer is in front of the dais, so you will see it. It will start when you start to speak. All speakers will receive a courtesy alert when thirty seconds remain. Speaking time may not be given to or shared with others. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this agenda item is for you to inform us about your views. If you have handouts that you wish to share with board members, please give them to Ms. Sullivan or Ms. Grant to my left, and they will make sure that each board member gets a copy. Finally, I'd like to call your attention to the blue and white sheet that was, that is at the door when you come in. This is a detailed boardroom decorum guideline and expectations. And it's at the door, and please, we ask that you read it because it really defines how, what the decorum, the expected decorum is for our boardroom. So with that, I'd like to call, we have oh, we have students tonight. We have, is it Mariah Moore? Mariah, welcome. Can you just state your name?
My name is Mariah Moore, and I will be playing two songs for you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mariah. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Beautiful. Oh, next we have looks like Archer, Archer, is it Rook? R O, I'm sorry. It's okay. Yes, it's okay. Yes.
I just want to make sure everyone can hear me before I begin. Yes? Okay, great. In November, my name is Jackie Elton. In November, my child was forcibly enrolled in Lake Otis Life Skills Course against my wishes. This is what has transpired. Archer attends a life skills class made up entirely of boys. She has no female peers. Only two of the boys are verbal. I informed Kelsey Bosel of Special Education that this move would strip my child of peers. She was able to observe and create her own personal goals through seeing their behavior in social settings, and it has. While my daughter used to crave going to school above all else, now I have trouble encouraging her to leave her bed in the morning. She has stated she does not want to go. Let me be very clear. The district's lack of inclusion has led to my daughter being unable to make meaningful friendships. Within three weeks of being at school, at the school, Lake Otis, Archer went without being changed over half of the school day, which violates not only the laws against neglect, but also violates the instruction of her IEP, which I was told would never happen again. That's right, this is the second time. And before the Special Education Department fixes their mouths or turns their head, even remotely in the direction of her teacher, I want to state that I was informed Lake Otis had better staffing than Baxter Elementary in regards to my child being changed, and that this, and that was an outright lie. So so many promises were made in the teacher's name that were blatantly lies. I cannot accomplish listing them in three minutes. Primarily that her change in schedule will be met, that she would receive inclusion hours at school, and that the program would be a better fit for her needs. Not one of these things have come to fruition. Beth White, her teacher, is an ideal teacher with subpar support. She communicates regularly, but has as much staff as Archer's classic Baxter with twice the physical needs of her students. I was told by an admin once that I should bring an advocate to IEP meetings. My mother ran an IEP advocacy agency for a decade. Do you want to know what her advice was? She said to sue. She said that her IEP goals were not being met, and that nothing would change until I did. My导师' IEP states that school for her will not solely be focused on measurable learning, but also social emotional development. This cannot be accomplished without peers for her to model after. I want to work with the district, but that requires flexibility I have not experienced. Just stories about how admin staff have special needs children that they are looking out for so they completely understand. What I want to know is if they understand, how could they stand by and let this happen to my child, or any child for that matter? Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Juliette Tardy. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Juliette Tardy. I'm here to advocate for my child and get the discriminatory policy regarding kids having to belong to a school orchestra in order to be in Honor Orchestra removed. My daughter Mariah Moore has been taking private and group lessons and for piano for nine years and violin six years. She attends Rukashula, the German immersion school, where there is no orchestra. She does, however, play an orf group, a xylophone and percussion band for ensemble experience. She also plays violin and sings for church and is in Broadway Kids and the Anchorage Community Theater. She and I were very excited for her sixth grade year to try out for Honor Orchestra. Kevin Downey, her music teacher, indicated that it would be a good experience and a way for her to increase her skill level. Her private teacher, Amanda Kerr, a nationally ranked fiddle player and Suzuki teacher, incidentally wasn't able to play a new symphony due to the same rule as she was homeschooled. She was able to get the music to me the same day of tryouts and thought the music would be very easy for Mariah. We went to tryouts where I found out her school wasn't allowed to participate due to it not having an orchestra. When looking up online, I found that there were already state law section fourteen thirty, three sixty-five A and whole and school district policy BP sixty-one forty-five to support students ninth through twelfth grade that attend charter and homeschools, allowing them to participate in extracurricular activities. ASD should provide an equal opportunity that should be extended to middle and elementary students as well. Due to current policies, students that have only been playing for four months are given access to this orchestra while Mariah, who has six years of experience, isn't allowed to try out. The current policy is discriminatory and is stealing the opportunities of our young, talented people. Being born in Anchorage and going through the ASD music program myself, starting in fourth grade, I was accepted into the Honor Orchestra, Anchorage Junior High and High School Symphonies, and eventually the Anchorage Civic Orchestra. I know that this is students' opportunities to have an orchestral experience and eventually eventually give back to the talent of our community, one of the reasons we have music programs in the first place. Mariah slated to go to either Service High School, the German immersion program, or East High School, our neighborhood school. Both of these schools have orchestras where Mariah hopefully will be able to participate and offer skills that she learns in Honor Orchestra. Please consider her this intolerant policy and being heard, being able to play in Honor Orchestra. Since you heard, she's clearly able to be in, be able to do that.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Erica Arnold. Erica Arnold, welcome. You have three minutes.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Erica Arnold. I'm a lifelong Alaskan. I was ASD educated and a proud CHS graduate. I am also a fifteen-year ASD employee. I'd first like to say thank you to Superintendent Bryant, Madam President Bellamy, and the rest of the excellent school board, and thank you for the support of the teachers for our fair one-year contract. I won't pretend to understand how to manage a budget for a school district of this size, and especially with a shortfall of ninety-eight million dollars, but I do know how it affects me. I know how it feels to have thirty-one students in my fourth grade class and almost five hundred students in my school. I know that it always, I know that it always affects teachers, staff, and students first. I know that the programs that directly affect students, teachers, and support staff first are cut. As I look at the potential reductions and the cuts to the district, I'm hoping that the burn of these cuts falls across the entire district. Everyone should feel it equally. I'm hoping if we are looking at travel budgets being cut and supplies budgets being cut, that it is not only the schools, but also here at this ASD building. I hear and I see of more and more positions being created here at the Ed Center, all the while talking about cutting positions in the schools. I hope that the district and the board is looking to cut here at the Ed Center as well. as well. If we're asking the teachers to take on more, I believe the people in the Ed Center should be taking on more as well. I don't want to sound pointed at the Ed Center, but I believe to feel that burn, as I said before, the cuts need to be felt equally amongst all of us. Cutting programs have a devastating effect on students. They are the ones that we should be protecting, those students. Oftentimes, programs get cut and they never ever come back. Positions in the Ed Center and in our schools can and will come back when the money comes back. I was wondering if anyone has seen an updated organizational chart lately with the flow of how, from the top down? I also have another idea. I believe it's time to rezone in the Anchorage School District. I've been a teacher for 15 years and live in Alaska my entire life, and I cannot remember a major rezoning within the school district. In Eagle River alone, we have schools with 200 students and some near 500 students. Maybe it's time to combine some schools. I am positive that will make some people mad, but that hasn't stopped us before. We need to think of us as a whole. We are a we. And that brings me to my next we. We all know ASD is not an income generating district, and we know where that money comes from, the capital. I'm inviting each one of you, and all of you, to the Red for Ed Rally this weekend at Town Square Park.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sarah Witish. I'm sorry, Whitison. Whitison. Sorry, Sarah.
Blame it on my husband.
Okay. So will you pronounce it, please?
Whitison.
Whitison, okay. All right. Thank you. You have three minutes. You're welcome.
I am the type of employee that you need. I love my students. I worry about them during breaks. I cheer for my students while they are away at AMYA, knowing that they are being pushed in ways a traditional school cannot. Recently, I was given flowers by a student because I was the one person who made a difference in his life during his high school career. I have been called a school mom and an auntie. I am not a principal, a teacher, or a counselor. I'm a secretary of a Title I school and a member of the Totem Association. I love my job. I know my worth. I know my skills. I'm open to learning new things, and I work so hard. Yet, right now, I have one foot out of the door because I don't believe that the district cares about the impact someone within my union group has on students. Totem employees are the front lines of education. We manage the business of the district and schools. We are employees who are typically the first ones to greet the students off the bus when they arrive in the morning and say goodbye to them at the end of the day. We are the employees that answer the phones, register the students, help sign up kids for sports and activities. We handle payments. We plan the schedules. We assist our students who need the most support, sometimes knowing that that might result in being physically harmed. Yet, you cannot function without us. Yet, the message you send is that you feel that we are not valuable assets to the district when you send your negotiation team in with nothing to bargain with. Here's the thing. You need us. As of last weekend, there are over 170 Totem positions that are unfilled. When anyone looks for work, they always want to know about the compensation. Unfortunately, what ASD offers to Totem positions is not even close to competitive, and it is far from a livable wage. In a recent interview, Dr. Bryant mentioned a 28% inflation that is affecting ASD's budget, that inflation is being felt by those you pay the least. Adjusted for inflation, I make the same amount of money I did when I started working for the district nine years ago in a lower paid position. In those nine years, we've had only one very small raise. This does not show that you value my longevity, my expertise, my customer service skills, the connections I've made in my school community, and the added skills I've gained in this time, or the duties I perform far above my job description. Not bargaining a fair contract is insulting and financially crushing. The district always seems to find the money for all sorts of spending, for lawsuits, new programs, raises for other employees, consultants, and affords high-paying jobs at the district level, yet you can't seem to find the money to pay for us a fair wage. I know that I make a difference. I know that on the school level, I am appreciated, and I work with great people and amazing students, just like every other Totem employee. But we can't keep staying because of the passion we have for the education and for the students. The Anchorage School District certainly can't afford to lose us. Please pay us what we are worth and negotiate a fair contract.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move. We're gonna go online. Mr. David Boyle. I did break our rules in the beginning when we clapped for Mariah.
Can you hear me?
Mariah tonight. We really should not be applauding. So thank you for your cooperation. David Boyle. Mr. Boyle, can star six to unmute? Try again. Star six to unmute. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Looks like you're unmuted. Can you? But we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, before I start my presentation, I want to commend the parents that have spoken up for their children today. That is really great to hear community members stand up for their kids in the school district. President Bellamy, board members, I'm David Boyle, and I'm speaking for myself. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to the pro forma budget for the next school year. I know their assumptions and more information to come to prepare this budget. As you know, the district has lost more than 6,400 students since the 2012-13 school year, and it's projected it'll lose another 4,800 students by 2027. This will be a total loss of more than 11,300 students since the 2012-13 school year. It's nearly a 25% drop in student enrollment. You cannot continue to kick this financial can down the road any longer and hold out hope that the state legislature will bail you out by increasing the BSA or other education funding. Your projected budget hole for the pro forma budget is $98 million. You need to reduce your spending. I recommend the following: Reduce your unreserved budget balance to the 5% minimum state level and use that $71 million to help fill the budget hole. Cut the mental health office and save another $3.6 million. By the way, this is not a function of the district. Cut the Office of Equity and Impliance and save another $571,000. Do not rebuild the Inlet View Elementary School, and you'll go to save another $30 million just by remodeling it. It's very unfortunate that you've decided to combine the Inlet View School rebuild with title security upgrades. You have seriously jeopardized needed security upgrades at several schools by appeasing a specific group of power players. Anchorage voters will not like your attempts to disregard their voices on the Inlet View School two years ago at the ballot box. I can also find savings in the capital budget, such as new siding at Mears Middle School. This is costing about $400,000 and would not seem to be essential to preserve the structure, but be there more for appearance. And why are you doing boiler and mechanical upgrades at Birchwood School at a cost of almost $2 million when this school was on the previous school closure list and may be on the next school closure list? You cry that inflation is eating away at your budget, and then you want the legislature to take the citizens' PFDs away to fund your budget. Our community is suffering from the same inflation brought on by the pumping of money into the economy by the federal government. And with an 11,300 drop in student enrollment, we expect the district to reduce its spending just like Anchorage citizens must. They cannot go to the legislature and ask for more money due to inflation. Your efforts to increase the BSA by more than $1,400 and by doubling the transportation funding will probably reduce our PFDs to near zero. Please, right-size your budget, downside your infrastructure for sure, and thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next, in person, we have Chelsea Ambrose. Welcome, Chelsea. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Ambrose, and I teach elementary art at Hinkade Elementary School and Gladys Wood Elementary School. I wanted to speak to the proposed budget cuts specifically in regards to the proposed cuts to the arts. You're all familiar with the board's goals to improve students' performance in reading and math. Last school board meeting, you spent a good deal of time discussing the problem of chronic absenteeism. I have plenty of anecdotal evidence and support of the arts education, but I wanted to share some studies that I found on the matter. A recent study by Rice University found that students who had increased arts education experiences saw improvements in writing achievement, emotional and cognitive empathy, school engagement, and higher education aspirations, while they had lower incidence of disciplinary infractions. The President's Committee on the Arts and Humanities cites a study by Shirley Bryce Heath that showed that students involved in arts education were four times more likely to have high academic achievement and three times more likely to have high attendance. Moreover, I can speak to the studio habits of mind that we teach in arts. They include developing craft, engaging and persisting, envisioning, expressing, observing, reflecting, stretching, and exploring. All of these are important, transferable skills to academic and social emotional development. I implore the school board to consider the role of the arts in accomplishing their goals while they make their budget decisions, and I urge our community and school board to speak out to the folks in Juneau as they make these critical decisions around the BSA that will decide our students' well-being. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, in person, we have Jay McDonald. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Hello, friends. My name is Jay McDonald. I live on the unceded American lands known as Anchorage, and I've got a police report to read today. It's kind of topical for some stuff that's going on lately. APD Detective Sarber is conducting this portion of the investigation and conducting an interview with CP. It's a minor. They're known by their initials only on this, at APD in December 2015. During this interview, CP disclosed to Detective Sarber that Fisher was her English teacher at, yeah, English literature teacher at the Family Partnership School. CP said that she had an actual classroom with about 15 students in it, and Fisher was their teacher. Fisher is also the co-owner of Frontier Tutoring, which was on contract with ASD. CP disclosed to me that Fisher contacted her via email in 2013, when she was 15 years of age, and started grooming her for a relationship by telling her how beautiful and special she was, showing a ton of interest in her. CP said that they communicated via text messages and phone calls and emails over about a three-month span from January to March in 2013. CP said that Fisher had sexual intercourse with her on about six occasions. Each time they had sex, Fisher would pick her up at the school, then drive her to his apartment where they had sex. Then he returned her to the school in time for both of them to be in class at the same time in the same class. And it's worth noting that he was only caught because he got popped transferring files back and forth on peer-to-peer networking systems involving adults and infants up to the age of 10. So I noticed that Q parent connection that the ASD uses, when parents loaded up, there are hidden data fields where the teachers on their end, they track the private cellphone numbers of the students. Like, why does a teacher need to have the private cellphone number of the student? Why do they need to hide that from the parents? The board transgender policy encourages teachers to have intimate one-on-one conversations with students about sexuality and hide it from the parents. You direct teachers who are not experts on this topic matter to have these conversations with these kids and to hide it from their parents. It's illegal, and teachers never have any legitimate reason to have one-on-one contact with kids directly talking about these topics. I think since this happens, like, it's really important to notice that he never would have even been caught. It was a lot harder in 2013, 2015 to do this, and it's just, you know, stroke of luck, this guy got caught. This same set of circumstances just happened down on the Kenai. It's never been easier to have a relationship like this, and the policies that the board is implementing, there's no risk management. You're leaning into this. You're creating hazardous environments. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to item E. I would like to just mention that attached to the agenda are any written public comments that were received, and they are available to, available. All right, consent agenda. Does anyone wish to move anything from the consent agenda?
Member Lawson.
I'd like to move to whole memorandum 087.
Okay, that will become item F2. Thank you. Not hearing, seen anymore?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by member Jacobs, second by member Wilson, to approve the consent agenda as amended, and that consists of items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. Is there any opposition to approving the agenda as amended? Seen no objection. The consent agenda is approved as amended. Thank you. And that brings us to item F. F1, ASD memorandum number 088.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 088, BB 9130 amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second to approve memorandum 088? Did I get that right? Yes. Okay, sorry. We don't have anyone wishing to speak to that item. I didn't. Oh, it's on a different page. My mistake. Oh, April. April Ide. Oh, she's on the phone. Okay, thank you. April, can you hear? We are at memorandum number 088.
Hello.
Hi, welcome. You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you, members of the Anchorage School Board, for granting me the opportunity to speak today. My name is April Ide, and I proudly serve as the Alaska PTA President and Diamond High PTSA President. I'm here with you with the proposal that I believe will contribute significantly to our collective efforts towards fostering a stronger connection between the Alaska PTA and the Anchorage School District. I'm here to advocate that for the approval of a bylaw amendment that would integrate Alaska PTA Board members into your esteemed Board's Communication Committee. Including representation from the Alaska PTA to the ASD Board's Communication Committee holds a potential to make a positive and meaningful difference. Having a voice from the State Board, particularly one that extends beyond Anchorage and maintains direct contact with the school state and nationwide, ensures a broader perspective and a more inclusive approach to decision-making. Over the years, as a State Board member, I have witnessed and participated in our shared commitment to enhancing parent engagement. This commitment is not confined to a specific region, rather it resonates across the entirety of our great state. The collaboration between the state and national PTA has allowed us to channel resources and grants toward supporting local PTA. These resources aim to empower schools in Anchorage and throughout Alaska to increase parent engagement and strengthen the ties between parents. By welcoming Alaska PTA Board members onto the Board's Communication Committee within Anchorage School Board, we can leverage this collective dedication to parent engagement and work collaboratively to address the unique needs of our diverse communities. I urge you to consider this bylaw amendment with the understanding that it represents an opportunity to forge stronger connections, share valuable insights, and create a more unified approach to education in Anchorage. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm confident that together we can continue to make a positive impact on the educational landscape of our beloved state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the only person we had to sign up. Member Jacobs, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick notes for those who weren't able to attend our Board Governance Committee where this bylaw amendment was heard. This is a fairly straightforward bylaw amendment which adds a non-voting ex officio seat to our Communications Committee, which would be staffed by the Alaska PTA, providing an Anchorage-specific representative. This would increase parental engagement by having that additional voice at our meeting with a dedicated role. The Alaska PTA's core mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Given the scope of challenges our district is facing, the priorities we have as a school board and as a district, and the significant number of board and as a district, and the significant number of changes that are coming down the pike for families in our community, I can't think of a better time to do what we can as a board to increase parental involvement in both uplink and a downlink to improve and increase the amount of communication with our families. With that said, this memorandum would also speak as a resolution for the Board President to appoint a board member to serve as a liaison for the Alaska PTA. That individual can be responsible for communicating with April in her current role as Board President, the representative that the PTA chooses to attend committee meetings, as well as specific PTO organizations. It's not every school has a organization that is a member of the Alaska PTA, and so I think it's important that we recognize those groups as well. And so I envision, as we have a community council report, being able to utilize that same document to distribute at the school level to PTAs, PTOs, to further expand our reach of communication as well as garner additional feedback. And so I think there's a few clear wins here. I am not seeing much of a downside. Would be interested in your board member's perspective, but I appreciate the Governance Committee allowing this to reach a vote of the full board and urge support. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Any other board member wishes to speak? Yes. Member Wilson.
So I wanted to speak in support as well. I think Carl has, Member Jacobs has done a great job outreach to our PTA Association, considering PTO associations as well. And it's really, as Communications Chair, really about just improving that communication, both allowing them to participate, knowing what we're doing as a board, things that the district is doing, some of that information, as well as the opportunity to hear what PTAs and PTOs are doing as well. So I think it's just improving the communication with our parents and families. So I will be voting in support.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would like to just state that this item came through the Governance Committee at its last meeting. So it was brought forward by Member Jacobs and moved forward through the Governance Committee, which is our process.
Madam President, if I might, there is frankly a clerical error from the revision, version of the memorandum that was created prior to governance. I appreciate you actually seconded this bylaw amendment, and so your name rightfully should be listed. But I mean, if we want to call that a typographical error and correct it, I'd be happy to do that. If you want to consider an amendment, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Okay. And actually, I think that actually the proper way to do it is for it to come from governance. So it really wouldn't matter who the makers of it was. It should come from governance. Once it goes through governance, it is the Governance Committee's recommendation that that just happens. So I'm fine with it staying the way it is. We'll just have to remember to clarify those, make sure in the future when things come from governance, that they come from governance. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Not seen, hearing any. I'll call for the vote. It didn't come up. Oh, there it is. All right, if you can vote. If you don't have your computer, just give a thumbs up or down to Katie. It's your vote. Did the little square come? I know, right? We're all in the same room tonight, so we don't have to be broke. All right. Thank you. That passes unanimously, seven yeas on memorandum, passing of memorandum number zero eight eight, which amends Board Bylaw nine one three one. Thank you very much. And that brings us to the second item on the, the second action item.
Madam President.
Memorandum number zero eight seven.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero eight seven, budget guidance to approve and amend the FY twenty twenty-four budget guidance recommendation as final guidance for the development of the budget in January twenty twenty-four. The FY twenty twenty-four budget guidance will be presented to the Board for approval in February twenty-four to meet the timelines provided by Armenia Supple Charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number zero eight seven, second by member Wilson. All right. We don't have anybody signed up to speak on this item, so Member Lawson, you pulled. Would you like to speak?
I would. I really appreciated the conversation we had about this memorandum a couple of weeks ago, when it was a non-action item, and again, in our work session today. It's hard for me to imagine any other topic that is more relevant at this moment in times. That said, I wanted to say that I took some time, I took board member feedback, administrative feedback, sort of during our dinner hour, and I drafted a different substitute memo, and I would like.
Number three.
This would, I would like to, I would move to, I suppose I should move to substitute memo S zero eight seven S three at this point in time, and I believe that it is coming
Okay, I don't see a lot of red.
If, may I?
Yes.
May I speak to this motion? Okay, great. So I was waiting for a.
I thought we had a second. Dora, did you second a second? Oh, okay. My apologies. So for memorandum zero eight seven, is there a, is there a second? I mean, we already, I thought we had, we had a second. Carl read it into, and there was no second.
I made a motion.
Oh, on the substitute.
On the substitute. Zero eight seven S three.
Right.
Point of information, Madam President.
Yes.
Could Member Lessons, I'm gonna borrow a trick from our Board Departmentarian, speak to her motion before she makes it, which might help alleviate some confusion, given the.
Sure.
Just the substitution.
At a very high level, items, I redacted a number of items that I had included in S So as to provide what I think is better alignment with board members' interests, and also not to bind the administration in any way in this process. So it is an attempt to be responsive to the different discussions that we have had.
Madam President?
Yes, Member.
Purposes of discussion, I'll second this amendment.
Okay.
Or substitution.
The substitution. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Don.
So, continue, please.
So to walk you through it, whereas S two contained the recommendation to take some of the seventy-one million dollars and invest it in board goals for reading and math, which, although it might benefit students, also would detract, it would take resources away from the student body as a whole. So I eliminated that twelve million dollar investment, and I simplified it. So there is a first section that says Board Guidance for Budget Preparation. Off-the-table items include a K three PTR increase, the middle school model collaboration time, school counselors, school security, credit recovery, ignite the immersion class size reduction item, reducing the number of holdback positions, delaying curriculum purchases, and share nurses, librarians at smaller schools. In a second section, the items that would remain on the table for FY twenty-five budget development purposes include allocation, spending the district fund balance down to five percent for that seventy-one million dollars to help offset the ninety-eight million dollar deficit, increasing pupil teacher ratios for grades four through twelve, and I didn't put a number in any way next to that, because that would be the administration's prerogative to solve that problem. Reduce district administration, and we do have a figure that was given to us, but I left it off of this guidance. The dome rental, this was on there before, delaying one-to-one device purchases, that was there before, increasing the estimates for unfilled positions, attrition, again, the administration would retain leeway for how to utilize that as part of the budget solution package. Implement hiring delays would be on the table, reducing supply allocations would remain on the table, reducing general fund travel remains on the table, reducing summer school options for enrichment and course advancement. I just received an email from a legislator asking for clarification. This would not affect Alaska REEDS Act.
Right.
Summer school. So I just wanted to confirm that. Also on the table, increasing activity fees, increasing rental fees, and then adding to the list would be all sports and activities, I've spoken about this before, and adding the education center rent reduction through June twenty twenty-five in anticipation that in two weeks, the Board will discuss a memo that's a non-action item tonight. And then I did retain the sort of late, the pull-it-back layered approach, the Board Guidance for reversing cuts, should we receive the money? So the first priority would be to reverse the grades three, four through twelve PTR increases, whatever the administration, you know, has to propose to close the gap, that would be the first thing that this guidance would say, that's what we're going to reverse, should a veto override take place and/or should a base student allocation increase take place. In addition, and I tried to rank these in order, I would propose here that we, the Board reverses the FY twenty-four PTR plus one increase, K through twelve, for FY twenty-five, so we'd be reverting our pupil teacher ratios, well, we'd be walking that back to what we were last year, and I think that's about seven point eight million dollars. We would reverse the FY twenty-five cut for sports and activities, we'd reverse the two-week hiring delay, we would reverse the virtual summer school enrichment cut, we would reverse the one-to-one device replacement cut, we would reverse the cut to general fund travel, and then if we are able, we would reverse the three percent administrative reductions. And again, those figures came from the sticky notes we all received a month ago. So I didn't make any of that up. So in essence, it is simplified, it shows what's on the table, what's off the table, what's on the table, and then it just codifies board priorities for walking back cuts.
All right. Thank you, Member Lessons. I appreciate the.
Point of information.
This version three. Questions?
The document in the agenda doesn't match the written document that we were given at the beginning and during the work.
So we have, we have a document that we were given on December nineteenth. That was the first. And then from our last discussion, at the last meeting, the document that's attached to the agenda is actually the one dated January ninth. Okay. Member Lessons did a substitute memo, I mean, she, the one we talked about today with the red was her first version of a substitute, S two, although we, this is what we talked about mostly today with Member Lessons. And so the new one is the one we just got, which is S three from Member Lessons. So the motion is to substitute this memo for the one that's attached to the agenda.
And what I'm saying is, the printed document we got in the work session, dated January ninth from Dr. Bryant, is not the same wording as what's on the agenda. Notably, through the chair.
Through the chair, sorry. So the document that you looked at in the work session from Mr. Ratliff was the administration's substitute memo. So the one that's posted in Board Docs for us to get started with was the original memo. So.
So we're looking at this printed one versus the substitute that Member Lessons has drawn.
I think if we were going to do the administration's substitute memo, that would be a motion to.
She's already, she's already moved to substitute.
And, right, for Kelly's, but I thought he was referring to the one that came from Mr. Ratliff. That one would have to be moved to substitute if we wanted to be voting on that one. Is that right?
The one from the work session says, from Dr. Jaren Bryant.
Right. From the administration. From the administration.
Okay. So we're looking.
What date do you have on? Is that the one for?
January ninth.
Yeah, they all say they're from Dr. Bryant, but.
Well, the real, I just want to be sure what the motion before us is, not counting the substitute, is it this printed version or is it what's on the agenda? Madam President?
Yes.
If I might, so I move, as the mover, I move the agenda version. So as the mover, I move the agenda version. I, we could have moved the substitute version. I move the non-amended version on our agenda. We can, after we work through the motion before us, which is Member Lessons' substitution, navigate if we'd like to move the substitutions presented by administration.
Let me, let me try to get clarity with Member Holloman before I go on. So the, the motion before us right now is to substitute memorandum number zero eight seven S three, is to substitute the memo. And what Member Jacobs said is that he, his motion was to substitute the.
Madam President, could we take maybe a two-minute, to get Member Holloman straightened out?
Maybe I need to be straightened out too, because I'm not getting it right.
I would never suggest such a thing, but if we're giving two minutes.
All right, let's take a, let's take a five-minute recess, because we've got to get this right. All right.
Okay.
So Andy.
So I actually, looking at what's on the agenda, it's number oh eight seven, and what we were handed at the work session is oh eight seven S.
Actually, the one we got, the one with the red was the one we got at the work session. We got, we got from the administration, zero eight seven S. Except that that's not on the agenda. And the difference between zero eight seven S and zero eight seven is the addition of nurses and librarians.
Right. That's what I noticed. So the one we're addressing in the meeting, the main motion right now.
The main motion, right?
Is.
S three. That's to incorporate nurses and librarians. And so.
I think that's good. That's this one. S three.
So what's on the fours, S? And, and what we're discussing, the substitute of S three.
S three.
Okay.
But S three includes the administration's.
The call is back to order? Oh, I lost Dora. Never mind. And I lost Lieutenant Two. All right, but I think Call us on back to order. For a further discussion on the motion before you is to substitute memorandum zero eight seven S three for the memo that's attached to the agenda. So is there anyone who wishes, else wishes to, is there any more discussion before I go to the superintendent? Yes, Andy?
I would just like to say that I think striking activities, and, and I will say that several weeks ago, I made the comment in public that we were very close to having to do that, which got some interesting feedback. I, I think given our budget situation where we're at, we, we are close to it, but it's not something I can see putting into the budget without a discussion with the public. In kind of the same way that we had a discussion about the potential closing of schools, announced the probability that, that we might have to do that, made very specific proposals about which schools would be affected and how students would be redirected, and then public meetings where people that were directly affected could come and speak about it. I, I think they're crucially important. I think they're something that, that while a lot of students don't engage in at all, it is the way a lot of students connect with our schools in, in a way that's incredibly meaningful. I think activities are at risk along with a host of other programs that a lot of people care passionately about, and we need to begin informing the public that that's, that's our future, that if we continue to not adjust for inflation, we are going to have to continue skinnying down our focus. So I, I appreciate what Member Lessons is, is doing, and I think it's appropriate. As an academic institution, we focus more and more on academics. But this is of such an impact that I feel like we need to have that discussion with the public before we advise the administration to consider it as a budget reduction for the fall of twenty twenty four, twenty five. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Member Donley, and then Jacobs.
I, I agree with Member Holloman. I do not want to see sports and activities move down to the potential cut list. I, I continue, as I stated during our work session, believe that's more important than the middle school model, extra planning time for instructors.
Okay, thank you, Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to first express appreciation for Member Lessons continuing to work within the framers that we have and the challenges we're facing to come up with feasible solutions that present really hard choices and, and take a firm course of action. I'll reiterate what I said during the work session in that we don't have, there isn't an easy cut on our, on our list. Everything that we're reducing in this memorandum will have an impact directly or indirectly on students. And so with that said, I, activities, activity strikes me as really, a really challenging reduction to to, to include as a, a foundation of our budget plan going forward. In part because I, I know and I see that it's the reason so many of our young people come to school, it also has impacts across Alaska. ASD not having a functional activities, a sports program would impact every student in our state to some level. So I, I think we have additional time in our budgetary process to consider that later if we'd like. This, again, this is primarily high level guidance as this memo is intended to. But I can't support that right now. I do think the substitute memo from administration generally provides a fair assessment of what the board has voiced as reasonable options and avoids us making reductions that we assume we'll be able to reverse and putting faith in the legislature, which at this point I don't see as warranted. I'll need to see action before I, I want to create a list of, of cuts that I see as being, I can bank on counting as, as being reversed if action occurs. I might like to see some movement from our leaders in June of first, so that's kind of where I land at this point, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Higgins.
Thank you. I, I like some of the changes in here. I like the idea of taking delaying curriculum purchases, for example, that's going to be directly impacting academic outcomes, it's a critical component, and taking, and taking that off of the list that may be included for cuts, I think is, is not good for kids. I think that's my perspective of it. And whether we leave sports and activities on there, when we continue to cut the number of teachers, we're going to end up cutting what they teach, whether it's music, whether it's things, all that's going to be impacted. And we need to realize, given the number of teacher positions that we have trouble filling, that everything's going to be on the table to some extent anyway, because when they cut the people that are teaching it, what are we going to do? I don't know. So I, I like the, the general nature of the changes. And I don't mind saying, look, whether it's this year or next year or the year after, the way we're going, sports and activities can't be off the table, and yet we, we put curriculum changes off the, you know, as, as a potential cut. To me, that's the wrong direction. You've got to look at the academic outcomes. I am not in favor of cutting sports and activities, but to say that that's going to be protected over curriculum changes, I think it's the wrong thing, it's the wrong message of our commitment to academic success. And so even though that's, you know, we're not saying we want to cut sports, we're just saying that it's just not off the table. Everything needs to be on there that potentially is not directly related to some of these other issues. We can cut the, cut the money to go to replace the, the Chromebooks, that doesn't make sense to me because that's directly related to what we need to do to, to help kids be able to learn. I mean, they got break a Chromebook, you can't have a replacement because they don't have the funds, that would be a mistake. So I'm not, I'm not convinced any of this is going to be absolutely necessary. I think we're going to get some funding, it's going to be incomplete, and then we're going to be right back to the table anyway, but I'd like to see the public see that all this is on the table. So I like the changes that, that have been presented here, and I'll support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Again, this is guidance, it is not our final budget, but I do hear what Member Holloman. I do, I do absolutely agree that there will be ample time for the public to chime in on whatever guidance we give to the, to the administration. All right, Dr. Bryant? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right there, I didn't even see you.
I was trying to get your attention.
Oh, listen.
I, I I absolutely support our activities and sports, and I'm hearing folks go point out different things. I completely agree with Member Holloman. If it's something that we are even going to consider giving guidance to the administration on cutting, I do believe that needs to be, we need to give our families and our students an opportunity to, to talk about that as well. There's, and I, I had, I raised student athletes, so I know very well that, that there is a tremendous amount that is learned in our sports and activities. I've talked to many employers who really appreciate what is learned with students that, that play sports, that participate in activities, the teamwork that they learn, the discipline, our attendance rate is directly affected by many of our sports and activities in a positive way because our students, many of us know that many students, and I talked to lots of adults, that said, you know, that it's, it's one particular activity or one particular sport that kept them coming to school every day. And so I just, I believe that is part of what students, what, what makes many of our students well-rounded, and what makes many of our students, what gives them the skills that they need to succeed both in school and in life. So I'm a true advocate for our activities and our sports for, for those reasons, and I've personally experienced it through many, many, many kids that have come through my home. That being said, there's, that, I guess that being said, I would not support this memo for that particular reason, and, and, and a couple other reasons as I'm looking through it, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam President.
On the substitute memo?
Yes, so first and foremost, I want to thank the board for this being an iterative process, so we presented an initial guidance document back in December, we received board feedback, we presented what, what's now substitute memo number one that incorporated the feedback, and now we're at substitute memo three, we're having the back and forth dialogue, and that's what this process was designed for, because we still do have time. And I, I want to remind the board and bring attention to, this process is slightly different than last year in that if the board were to adopt the substitute memo number one, as is, we still have a lot of balancing to do, we have a lot of conversations to be had. I, I'd like the board to think about this process this year as, as more of the guardrails. We really want to understand what the values of the board and community are, and if the board says that certain things are off the table, we want to adhere to that and come back to the table in February with a budget that reflects the, the values and feedback of our community and our school board. So that, fast forward to today with substitute memo three, you know, I, I have a number of different comments, most I shared during the work session, and again, I, I want to thank Member Lessons for thinking through all of the different thoughts that were shared that brought us to substitute memo three this evening. I, I would say, I, I want to draw a couple of comparisons between substitute memo three and substitute memo one. Substitute memo one is very similar to the original guidance document. Really, the only thing that changed was we incorporated the board's feedback where there's not a desire to share nurses and librarians at school, so we added that as a non-negotiable. That's the only difference between the original document and substitute memo one. Substitute memo three provides a lot of opportunities for the board to weigh in. It is very different, and we've already alluded to it. This document that we're, that we're discussing right now discusses the elimination of sports, the maintaining of Ignite, which is another thing that was removed in the original document, and then also reducing support for, or keeping immersion classes as a non-negotiable and keeping the holdback positions as a non-negotiable. I, I do want to share my perspective on how we got to substitute memo one, and I did share this a little bit in the work session, but really, the purpose, one is guardrails, but two is to provide a path to have continuity of services for what school looks like now to what school can look like next year. So when you look at the original guidance document, for example, one of the reasons why we proposed reducing support for immersion classes is because we want to preserve immersion. Really, we're at a breaking point in our budget development as a result of chronic flat state funding to where we may not be able to offer immersion in, you know, two, three, four years. So really, by reducing support for immersion class sizes was an attempt to maintain immersion programs. Similarly, for the activity fees, increasing activity fees is nothing that we would want to do, it really just puts costs on our families that have athletes, but it was an attempt to maintain sports and programs going into next year. And now we're at a point where we're discussing not having sports and activities at all. So these are really intense conversations that are the culmination of chronic flat funding, and I would say a failure of our state to, to maintain its schools, and now we're here. All I'll say is that substitute memo one was intending to give flexibility for us to cut costs but maintain programs, and what the board needs to grapple with is that memo three would require us to commit ourselves to changes that are rather drastic. I, I think we're moving in the right direction, but when we're talking about eliminating sports and also holding harmless things like immersion class sizes, et cetera, we're setting ourselves up to still have to make very difficult conversations going in to the next couple of years, and I wish I had all the answers, but the intent of the original memo was to really lean in on our fund balance and the, the cuts that we outlined in the guidance document, to make minor reductions to a lot of programs as opposed to huge reductions and elimination of specific programs, and it's really the, the complete board that has to decide which direction we want to go, it's really more philosophical based off of our resources and our values. So that's my perspective. I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Any other discussion on the motion to substitute memorandum zero eight seven S three for the main?
Yes. I wanted to thank board members and the administration for facilitating the conversation and for engaging in a challenging topic. I think I don't see a path where a ninety eight million dollar structural deficit, offset by seventy one million dollars of savings, which still leaves twenty seven million dollars of cuts on the table, is going to allow us to have anything that, even if we distribute costs or cuts, you know, a million dollars here and there, we are not going to be left with an education system that looks like what I think any of us intend it to look like. I think that the sports and activities cut, though we haven't had, I mean, I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, we haven't had a formal conversation about it, we're having it kind of now, that's fifty teachers, that's a significant path to closing a twenty seven million dollar gap. If we take that off the table, you are increasing class sizes, there's no way around that. And that's not necessarily our doing, there's, I don't see another path forward. So you can hold dear to something, and I hold very dear to that, too. Student engagement is critical in education, but so is a reasonable class size in an elementary, a middle, or a high school, and we need all fifty teachers that five million dollars of sports and activities would otherwise eliminate under this situation. So I'm going to make a lot of people mad by the suggestion that I've made tonight, and I get that, but that is what I'm going to continue as long as we don't have a veto override, and as long as we don't have a BSA increase, that has got to be a piece of the Anchorage School District's budget solution. I'm worried that the original memo and the administration's substitute tonight, that they're very nicely written, I think that they're going to lead to a lot of February horse trading by board members at a very long meeting or two at the second meeting in February, because I don't sense consensus. So
You mean consensus with?
Oh, I don't think that we have consensus on a number of the specific issues that are on the table. Ignite, immersion, I mean, any of the items here. My, my sense is that different board members value different things, and the, the memo as it's written is going to enable the administration to draft a budget, and that and that is their job, their prerogative, their responsibility. But I sense that it's still vague enough that we're going to be left with a document that board members are going to say, I want this. Another board member is going to say, I want this. And we're going to be doing a lot of budget amendment making in February because I think that it's not granular enough right now. So that was my attempt to prevent those conversations in February by focusing the conversation here. So the board will vote however, wait, you know, whatever way it will vote. I appreciate the input. I think it's going to be, we have a long winter ahead of us.
Yeah, we do. Okay, any other comments before we vote? Member Higgins?
One quick one. We're not voting tonight to cut sports. We're not cutting tonight to cut activities. What we're doing is saying, what should at least be on the table for discussion? The board will vote later on regards to a budget that has it. And to simply exclude some areas, to me, K through three, reading levels, all that, I don't want to see that cut. There are some things I definitely don't want to see cut, but the others, it just means it's out there for discussion only and it doesn't mean the board today is cutting hockey, cutting football, cutting basketball, cutting music or anything else. We're just saying everything in the future is on the table because we have to discuss it and then the board will make that decision later. And that's, so I don't, I don't want people overreacting to what you're doing, but I'm saying every, the magnitude of the cuts we have to make today and make in the near future based on what the assembly, legislature and the governor is doing is severe and we just have to recognize that. That's all I'm voting for. Thank you.
So the motion before you is to substitute memorandum zero eight seven S three for the administration's substitute memo dated January ninth. I mean, the original, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's the, that would be the 19th. What's the date? The one from December 19th. I did it again, sorry. All right, so if there's no more further discussion, let's vote. Yes. So two yays and five nays. That motion fails. Six, right? No, five. Oh, well, counting the students.
So Madam President, if I might?
Yes, you may.
I would move that and ask unanimous consent that we adopt the S version in place of memo eight seven.
Can you just tell me the date on that memo, please?
January ninth.
Thank you. I have the right one.
And if I can speak to my?
Oh, yeah.
Just before we approve unanimous consent, just want to make sure. I probably should have moved the substitute version. I didn't see it attached to the agenda and so I missed it. My apologies for the mistake.
It was a good discussion. Did you want to speak to it before we?
No, that was it.
That was it? Okay. All right, is there a second? That was Andy. Okay, thank you. Moved in second to, where are we? To adopt the substitute memorandum? Right, right. Okay. All right, discussion, anything else? Anybody else?
Yeah, Madam President, just really quick, after we substitute, I have an amendment to the substituted version. But yeah, we're taking things one step at a time.
All right, so any other discussion before we vote? To adopt the substitute memo? Yes, student representative, Josh, your vote? Okay, so that passes. Six to one. Now, Member Higgins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President.
You have an amendment?
Yep, so I move to amend AST memorandum number zero eight seven S budget guidance by adding the following text at the end of the document as a bullet point, which would read, "Review high-value contracts for efficiencies, cost savings, and viable candidates for reductions in service."
You got that, Katie. Yeah. So the amendment before us is to add a bullet point that speaks to review of high-quality contracts, but Katie's going to get the language. Was there a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay, Member Donley will second for purposes of discussion.
Madam President, can I speak to my motion?
You may speak.
Thank you. This was discussed in the work session. We've had two entities offer up potential cost savings to the school district. We have a number of contracts. The administration, as they've relayed earlier today, is constantly looking at ways to achieve the best possible value in any contract the district enters into. This amendment would simply place a priority on that work and send a clear message to our vendors, to those we have entered into a contract with, that we're actively looking to identify savings because we are talking about, and we did just talk about, our activities and sports, a reasonable reduction. And so it simply makes this a priority. I would ask support for this amendment as it is a potential way we can reduce the amount of harmful choices we have to make as a board during our budget adoption process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing it, I don't know, yes, Member Lessons?
I guess the question, what do we mean by high value? Like, is there a threshold?
Yep. Madam President, I can clarify if I might? Yep, so that language was actually suggested by administration. As you can imagine, we have, I don't know the exact number, but I would wager thousands of contracts for various things, from cleaning supplies up through personal services. And so this would allow administration to focus their efforts on things where reasonable reductions can be made, where those savings would prove to be the most effective at mitigating budget work. With that said, and as administration presented earlier during the work session, every contract is reviewed for determining how do we get best value before we enter it. This would focus their work on contracts that are of the highest dollar amount, that potentially are coming up for renewal or review, or where there may be knowledge as to where savings can be gleaned from. Administration has a different interpretation as the language, you know, what kind of was suggested. By all means, please.
Okay, Member Lessons?
Maybe that's a follow-up. Would you exclude the contracts that we have? I mean, I wouldn't, I don't know if I would define those contracts with our various bargaining units?
No, that would, yeah, that wouldn't be with the bargaining units. It would be with specific vendors and things of that nature.
Yeah, vendors and contract services. Okay? Other questions? Member Lessons?
Would it need to be amended to clarify, though, need to, you know, review high-value contracts with vendors for efficiencies?
So from a, I'm going to put my, Madam President, if I might?
Yes.
I'm going to put my union hat on and say that a collective bargaining agreement, in my opinion, is very different from a contract, but I appreciate the point of clarity and hopefully my explanation is whatever one it is. Thank you.
Not seeing or hearing? Oh, yes, Josh?
Wondering if there is an estimate to how much can be gleaned or sought from, is making them more efficient from here?
Yeah, Madam President, if I might?
You may.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. I think that's a great question, sir. At this point, I don't think we know the answer to that. I think there's, there's going to be probably two phases of the work. The first, that's done prior to our budget adoption, but I anticipate us having to have significant conversations for this board, having to have significant conversations regarding reducing expenses, not just this year, but the year after and the year after. And so this process should be ongoing. It should be a constant priority of the board, frankly. And so I think there'll be evolutions and kind of different tranches as fiscal years go on.
Okay. Other questions? Member Donley?
Madam President, I'd move to amend the amendment to add the word following where it says, "Review high value," to add the word vendor for the word contracts. So simply add one word between value and contracts, vendor.
I'll second. Okay, moved in second to amend the amendment by adding the word vendor after value. Did you want to speak to your motion any more than we already have? Thank you. Seeing no other persons wishing to speak, I'm going to call for the vote. Oh, yeah, I guess I can ask for unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the amendment to the amendment, which is to add the word Seeing none? That, that's approved. No opposition. So now we are back to the First Amendment as amended. And you're going to put that? All right. So we are now back to amendment number one as amended. And that would, yeah, high value vendor should be in there. So the motion before you now is to approve the additional bullet to the original memo, which will read, as soon as Katie gets it all done. It's all right. Don't scare America though. Please, don't scare her. Contracts, yes. So the bullet, the additional bullet in the budget guidance, memorandum number zero eight seven, is to just add that bullet to review high-value vendor contracts for efficiencies, cost savings, and viable candidates, and viable candidates for reductions in service. All right. When you're ready, please vote. Oh, is there any, yeah, you guys always, I can do that. Is there any opposition to the amendment? Seeing, hearing none? And our student vote? Joshua? Yes, okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you. You guys are making it easy for me tonight. Love it. Okay. All right, here we go.
Madam President, can I? Thank you. I would move to strike the line item in the memorandum, memorandum eighty-seven S.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Yep, sorry. I would move to strike the line item under memorandum eighty-seven S regarding the dome rental in its entirety. If there's a second for discussion, I'd be glad to speak to it.
I'll second. His move is to strike it from the, he wants it to be off the table, basically. Go on.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just for clarity, I am striking it from the memorandum and not adding it to the off-the-table considerations in part because of the amendment I just passed, we just passed as a board. My hope is that administration can review for potential cost savings in existing contracts and potentially glean enough savings to fund this expense if possible. This vendor proactively connected with members of the board and offered up a voluntary reduction in costs significantly of roughly $50,000, coupled with the expenses related to the education center. I think we have a template to work through, work, continue working on as a district regarding reducing expenses that we have incurred via contracts. And we should honor the entities that have voluntarily attempted to work with the district. And so while the administration may come forward ultimately and, and say that this expense simply can't be afforded, given our overall budget picture and the other things the board may choose to, to keep off the table, I believe it should, for the time being, remain a feasible expense at the reduced rate. Thank you.
Any other comments? So moved by Member Jacob, second by Member Wilson, to remove, to take the dome rental off the table for cuts, based on the, off the list.
So, Madam President, to be clear, my motion is simply to strike it from the memorandum and for reasons I just specified, it could become an?
Just strike it from the memorandum.
Correct, yep.
All right. We'll get it right here. Do you want to change that, Katie? Strike from the memo? Any other comments? Yes, Member?
I'm gonna, I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I appreciate the vendor reaching out to the district. I think it's remarkable, but even with a reduction, it still is two teachers. So I'm going to vote to support those two teacher positions and I would suggest, I will support leaving it on the table.
So the most? Any other comments? So the motion before you is to strike the dome rental from the memo? Did Josh vote? Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. To strike the dome from the list, from the memo? We're waiting on you, Member Higgins. Yeah, we can take the voice, student vote, and come back to Member Higgins.
Name?
Is what in there? We're striking it, I mean, I think, let's see if it's, that's what's from the memo. That amendment passes four to three. So the dome will be striked, stricken, struck from the memo. Okay, next, Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, the main motion as it exists before us now still takes the middle school model, which is extra planning time in middle school.
which costs over $2 million, the district over $2 million, off the table to consider for potential reductions. And at this time, I would move to delete the middle school model from the off-the-table bullet list in the main motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm in a second for discussion.
Okay. Member Donnelly, you want to speak to your motion again? I mean, not again, but before you're
Thank you, Madam President.
We're just trying to get it in the thing right. It was, restate your motion. We didn't get it.
In the remaining main motion, under items most consensus being off-the-table for budget reductions, the third one down, the second one down is the middle school model, which is extra planning time in middle schools, costs about over $2 million. And it's to just delete it from being listed as off the table.
Right. So the, his motion is to put the middle school model on the table for cuts. Right? Or to cut it? How do you want to?
I'm just recommending it be taken, deleted from where it appears.
Yeah.
I'm moving that it be deleted from where it appears now.
To remove it from the budget reduction consideration? Because that's what it is. I'm just trying to be consistent.
No, not remove it from the budget reduction consideration. It's the opposite. To remove it from the don't-consider-it list.
Off-the-table list.
Yes, yes. Oh, and I was going to speak to
Yes, you could, please.
I just, I just believe there's a lot of higher priorities that exist that are still on the potential cut list, such as pupil-teacher ratio. For one, that I'm very concerned about. And and I believe that it does not rise to the level to have to be on the do-not-consider list when we're considering increasing pupil-teacher ratio, you know, specifically on the list.
Okay. All right, I see Member Holloman and then Member Lessons, and then Higgins.
Well, a lot of times we refer to the middle school model as being about collaboration. What it really is, is there are specific expectations the district has for middle school teachers. And they actually set aside time inside the contract day for that work to be done. It's kind of a remarkable thing, and it's not something you commonly hear in education. But that's really what that extra money is, is that we asked for additional work and we were actually willing to pay for it. I think that's a habit we should encourage and further. And perhaps even to the other two levels in education. It seemed like a fine step forward to me. I, I do think the benefits are there and we should continue with the expectations and we should continue paying for what we get.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
This might be a multi-part question. So how would the removal of the middle school model affect student outcomes? Is sort of the broadest question, and that probably merits a much longer response. And specifically with, in thinking about the shift of sixth graders to middle school, part of that shift involves changing building utilization. We received a board, you know, communication to this effect six or seven weeks ago. It was like a chart that I remember seeing. And so we're going, yeah, so we're going to use classrooms differently to have larger enrollments in our schools. So how would the removal of the middle school model change, would the removal of the middle school model change building utilization practices that I think are a part of the successful move of sixth graders to middle school?
Thank you through the President, and I may need some staff perspective on the building utilization question. So I'll give you a minute, but I can speak to the middle school model specifically. It is a designated time during the contract day for teachers to come together and to talk about their specific cohorts of students, which we heard during last year's budget development process is a value add. Because as you'll recall, the administration initially recommended the middle school model for up for consideration as being on the table for removal. And the board overwhelmingly expressed support for the model because of that dedicated time to discuss student outcomes, but also non-academic factors related to students as well. And that's the reason why we decided to incorporate the middle school model with our sixth grade move. And in fact, it was one of the reasons that we wanted to at least put professional learning communities on the table, because if there's not a middle school model, that dedicated time for teachers is essential. So we're really fortunate that our middle school teachers, for some of our students in their most developmental years, get the opportunity to talk about students and academics and outcomes, not just in the morning on Late Start Mondays, but really throughout the week during the middle school time. So it's really time for instructors to convene and discuss that I think is a huge impact. We would have to, and I will admit, there hasn't been a quantitative or qualitative study on the impact of the middle school model within ASD. But what I've gathered from staff members and based off of what's happening during that time, it appears to be a value add. So that's my anecdotal perspective. I'll definitely let staff chime in. Would our former middle school principal like to chime in?
So, yeah, through the chair, so I, as far as the utilization goes, Member Lessons, yes, we would need to go back and look at that, because we are anticipating some of those classrooms being used during that middle school model time. That's been part of the planning that some of the principals have been using. However, I do not believe that we are looking at utilizing the we could probably have to look at like utilizing those classrooms during their regular planning period, individual planning periods. We just, the principals have to go back and relook at that utilization piece, because we were looking at utilizing some of those classrooms for each period.
You know, I also know that that time I think we've all, understanding what happens in the middle is really, it's a unique experience. Staff get to not only look at their own kids, but they get to share their kids. They get to do cross-curricular thematic activities. They get to talk about and do, what we really want them to do is to look at ways to improve student outcomes, look at ways to help that student that is struggling, that needs that extra attention. Teams are an amazing, amazing support for students and families. And I, I just it is not a luxury. I see it as a requirement. But that's my two cents as a diehard middle school principal. Other comments? Uh, Member Higgins, I'm sorry. You are on my list.
But you know, when we moved the sixth graders into middle school, there was discussions about the academic outcomes with the studies that had been done in, I don't know if it was Stanford or a number of different places, that indicated academic results go down overall. Boys voted to do that. It helps support the issue of how many elementaries and their advantages with that and the like. But one of the issues is, is that those students with the social-emotional learning aspects, those kids come out behind. And the middle school supports that. So middle school provides more support to these kids. So if we're going to do this, there are some kids that benefit, sixth graders going to middle school, but there are some that won't. And doing what we can to support those kids that do not get the benefit for going to sixth grade to middle school, I think is our obligation. And I do not think that eliminating the middle school model is in their best interest. I think the kind of support that that provides to these students, the studies have shown some benefits that come out of the middle school model, I don't want to see that go away. I didn't support the sixth graders going to middle school. It was a six-one vote. You're right, it's a board decision. But there were concerns I had about it. Well, this just adds to that level of concern. I want to make sure that we're providing the support necessarily before we see these kids get set aside for some others getting the benefit. And I have real concerns that we have any other checks and balances type of support for these kids that are going to have a difficult time, and that's precisely what the study said. They're going to have the tough time, and we need to provide support for them, so I'm going to oppose it.
Any other comments, Member Wilson? And then Lessons.
Going to go ahead and say it out loud? I completely agree with Member Higgins. But, middle school is, it's just such a unique transitional phase in our students' educational journey. And I think most teachers that work in middle school would definitely agree with that. But we are we have, as a board, supported, and I voted for it in support of moving our sixth graders to middle school. And we really need to support that transition for our kids, for our staff, for our schools as a whole. So I really absolutely support keeping our middle school model and continuing that to make sure that transition is successful for our students and our staff.
Thank you very much. Member Lessons?
I really appreciate Member Donnelly bringing this issue up. I think that it's good to have these conversations, to learn from one another, to have an opportunity to express concerns, questions, and values. One of the things that I found most useful over the past year or so is a book by John Hattie. I maybe have mentioned it before, and he happens to be coming to Alaska, I think at the end of this month.
We purchased those for each
Somebody, somebody put it in my box, and I read it.
We purchased it for every board.
It's great, thanks. So he does talk about the importance of teachers critiquing each other, planning together, evaluating together, and finding many other ways in which to work together. And that doing so happens to be more effective and efficient, happens to be a more effective and efficient use of educational funding than things like summer school, class size reductions, ability grouping, open learning communities, extracurricular programs, and retention. Accomplishing the maximum impact on student learning depends on teams of teachers working together. I think that's really important. And so for me, I'm going to rely on a lot of different inputs, including an assessment of sort of the value of that investment, so.
Thank you, Member Lessons. So with that, I think we're ready to vote.
Can I just wrap up?
Oh, yes, sure. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Madam President. I appreciate the debate, appreciate the opportunity for debate, and I respect the opinions. I think they're very rational, you know, good arguments. That's why I've always been concerned about middle school and how tough it is on kids those years. And that's why five years ago, I proposed that we start transitioning to the national movement of K-8 schools, because I just think it's a much more healthy format for our children, especially our children in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. That as it may, while I recognize there's logical, good arguments for it, at the same time, I'm very concerned about pupil-teacher ratio. And I think that's just more important at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're ready to vote. The amendment before you is to delete the middle school model from the off-the-table list. So a yes vote takes it off the list, a no vote keeps it on. All right. You ready, Josh?
Good.
Oh, Kelly, did yours come up? You did vote? It didn't count, did it? You do, yay or nay? And that that motion actually fails, one to six. So, middle school model will remain on the list, on the off-the-table list. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, if there's no other member.
Okay, I'm not seeing any others, so go on, Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. The main motion before us at this time doesn't speak at all to something that was brought up in public testimony earlier in the meeting.
Ignite?
Yes, Ignite, yeah. And that's the existence of the Office of Equity and Community Engagement. And probably, I believe it should be on the list to consider for reductions, since it's a very new creation relative in the district. Granted, it's, you know, it's half a million dollars or less, but it's still, we're looking for all kinds of options for reductions. I think it's appropriate to have it on the main motion. So I, at this time, I would move an amendment to add to the bullet list of on-the-table potential reductions, reductions to the Office of Equity and Community Engagement.
Is there a second? Hearing no second? That motion fails. Do you have another?
My last one, none.
Okay.
The main motion, as I understand it now before us, because we've been through a lot of changes, so if I got to
I know, right.
Please tell me. Is, it still has Ignite on the list of remaining on the table? I believe that's
Still has what?
Ignite. It's item number three in one of the versions I have. Is remaining on the table?
We are on the version, the memo that we are, it's January ninth?
We don't have a hard copy of that. Is it, is it, is Ignite still number three on the list? Yes, so it's on there. So I
Oh, you mean number three on the, on this list?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, oh, third bullet?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's what I was going to talk about. I just believe it's, as members reasonably believe, the middle school model is an essential element. I believe Ignite is an essential service that we provide to our highly gifted students. And it's, we've had phenomenal public support and testimony for it over the years that I've been here. So I would move to delete Ignite from the on-the-table list.
Second. Moved in second to delete Ignite from the on-the-table list. Got it, Katie? Is there any discussion? Question?
So Dr. Bryant, can you speak to how it's stated the district will still maintain highly gifted education? However, pull-out services for gifted students may be adjusted. Can you, can you speak to the
Because we're not heading, go on.
That's why I'm confused.
Sure. And this is a conversation that we had last year as well. We fully intend to support our gifted students. What we're proposing is a shift in program. Ignite is a program that provides additional teachers to pull out students and provides great support. I think that it's a fine program. The issue with Ignite is that it is a higher cost per student. And while we do have plans to continue providing gifted education through things such as multi-tiered systems of support and other structures like that, what we're proposing is to not allocate funds for, let's say, the 10 or 12 teachers that we're allocating specifically for Ignite, because those funds might need to be allocated towards programs such as classroom instruction, which would impact the district as a whole. With that said, it is a program that has a lot of support, and it's not the first time that we've talked about Ignite. And there certainly is a case to be made to maintain it at all costs. But as what has been said earlier in this meeting is that we're getting to a point as the structural deficit grows year over year, it's beginning to be harder to maintain some of these beloved programs, whether it's Ignite or an immersion or any sort of program that's an additional added cost per student, even sports. So really, it falls within that category. But with that said, we do have an obligation to service our gifted students, and that would happen. Would it be the same number of touch points per year as Ignite? Possibly not. It certainly wouldn't be at the cost of the number of teachers that we currently employ through that program.
Other questions, Member Lessons?
I appreciate Member Donnelly pulling, moving to pull Ignite from on-the-table to off-the-table. Number one, our Ignite teachers Number one, our ignite teachers primarily, right now, this year and henceforth, are functioning as our M-class testers. So I'm not sure who's gonna do testing if you delete your ignite teachers. That's going to pull resources from some other area. Number two, I remain concerned by the potential for ignite teachers to be for asking classroom teachers to deliver, what is essentially, asking classroom teachers to deliver essentially special education services with all of the other responsibilities that they're tasked with. We don't have, in most of our schools, to my understanding, enough, enough staff to truly differentiate, and you're, I think, I think this would be pulling staff away. It would be retaining staff for PTR reasons, but it would be pulling staff away in ways that I think, you know, the win time, not being very coherent right now, but I have some concerns about the ways that removing the ignite model would transform what often amounts to like a multi-hour block of, I don't know, maybe dissecting a frog. Really hard to do that in, you know, if you're a subset of, you know, if you're three kids in a classroom doing an ignite, you know, your gifted services activity, you're not gonna be dissecting that frog by yourself in fourth grade. The ignite teacher allows that to happen. It allows for the longitudinal project that I think is is challenging, not impossible, but challenging in a standard classroom delivery model. I'm concerned about what would be lost.
If you have any.
Member Lessons, I think that is a fair concern. And again, really, any program, whether it's ignite, whether it's immersion, or any program that has an added cost per student, it should be something at least worth discussion, especially when we're having really serious conversations around increasing PTR for all students by by high numbers, higher numbers than any of us would care to increase it. I don't think anybody would say that ignite doesn't add value. I think at this point, we're making an economic calculation, the marginal cost benefit of a program like ignite, given the structural deficit that we're in. I'm not saying that the answer is to keep it or against it, but that's how we got to this point. And I do think that all of the points shared by Member Lessons and others are fair. It would be something that adds value that wouldn't exist in the same format. It would have to be reimagined. We'd have to determine how using our existing staff, that we do things like testing and also making sure that we support our gifted students. But will it be as high-touch as ignite? Probably not, because we need to reduce the cost per student for all of our programs.
Other comments, questions? The motion before you is to delete ignite from the on-the-table list. Let's vote. Student first?
Yeah.
He's got her, you can give her a thumbs up or down. What were we waiting on? Oh, Member Lessons. She had her. Yeah. And that vote is a three-four vote, so the nays have it with four votes, so that would be a no. All right, any other? All right, I'm gonna move on. Thank you, we are now to the main, the main motion. Give Katie just a minute. All right, so the main motion is to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five budget guidance. This is guidance, it's not, yeah, recommendations as final guidance for the development of the budget. Is there any, any other questions, comments? Before we vote? Let's vote. We'll start with our student.
Yeah.
Again, this is guidance. Okay, and that passes five yeas to two nays. All right, thank you. That completes our action items. As you will see on your agenda, you will have, we have several non-action items that will come back to you on the twenty-third, our next meeting. We are now at, and there are no, we don't have any additional public comments. So Superintendent's update.
I'll keep it short, really, I just want to, one, welcome back our students and our families and our staff. Happy New Year, warm welcomes, we're excited to have you back in our schools. And I really just want to share that I'm thankful for the board for this rich, robust discussion. This has been an iterative process, and we truly value the feedback as we determine, you know, what the values are, what's on the table, what's off the table. This is going to be really helpful in us preparing something that we can present to the board for approval or potentially revision. I do want to validate some of the concerns that Member Lessons brought up, where, you know, the broader the guidance memo is, chances are the more robust conversation we'll have in February, because there's a lot at stake and there's a lot of options, and it's not easy. This is one of the most difficult things as fiduciaries that we have to do. And I really value that I'm working with a great set of folks that have good heads and great values, and will figure out what we need to do. But at the end of the day, I think this abdication of responsibility from the state when it comes to maintaining our schools is really failing our students, and that's what this comes down to. And that's why, you know, truly, this is the time, both for the people at this table, but also the people listening to this board meeting, to make your voices heard, not just to the school board, but really our legislators, because they have a really important decision as to whether or not they want to continue to put the education of Alaska students in yet another year of jeopardy. We've had a difficult conversation tonight. We're going to do our best to determine what that path forward looks like, but this guidance that we have tonight will help inform the next iteration of what our guidance for the budget will look like, or final budget will look like. So we really need some heroes and supporters in Juneau, and again, this is my call to action. I'll leave it at that, it's been a heavy night, thank you.
And thank you very much. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, so let's do, that brings us to the, oh man, I put my agenda away, I'm really ready to go. So now we're at our comments. That's, Andy, can we start with you tonight and come up, work our way around? Final comments? Feel free to pass.
Not too much, I will echo what the superintendent said. It's one thing to have a budget cut for a year or two, or flat funding for a year or two, and that can actually be healthy. Makes you look at things with a closer eye. But more and more, I'm running into people that remember the offerings of this district and other districts in the state twenty years ago. How many electors there were, how many opportunities there were. And, and also remembering that there was a time when people blew themselves to Alaska and stood in line to be considered for an opportunity to teach in this state. I like to say that I remember that, and I'm not really old, but I'm actually getting really old, so. But it wasn't that long ago. The nineties were just a few years ago, if I remember correctly. But it really has fundamentally changed, and ultimately, it really just has an overwhelming effect. I, I know that, you know, part of it is staffing can be so skinny that somebody retires, or they leave the state, and programs die. Traditions die, because there weren't enough people involved, and there's not support to keep them going. A lot of the fantastic things that happened in our school really are the will and dedication of a person, or two or three people that just want to make it happen in their classroom or in their school. And they do what they do without the, without any real support or funding. And so when they leave, it goes with them, or even if they just have to have an involuntary transfer to another building in the school, things just cease to exist. So I, I do think that our call for inflation-proofing is very reasonable. It would help bring back the idea that we could innovate, that we could shuffle things and perhaps do things better. Where right now, we know things are gonna be cut. We know that the way things have been going, and they've been going this way for so long, the idea of implementing a new program that needs three or four years to really get its feet under, it'll never have that. The idea of coming up with something that requires some funding means that whoever's doing it knows that something else has to not be funded in order for their idea to get it. But it has a really detrimental effect on what people are willing to do and on what they can do in terms of improving things in the district. So, I, I think more and more of our legislature is starting to understand that, and I hope that we can get support from parents and the community to lean on them, to at least do the basics, and maybe we won't have quite this discussion next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
I wanted to say that we have our series of meetings on Thursday. Maybe a point of question or clarity, are we having a little buffer between each of the meetings? Are we going boom, boom, boom?
So, Andy, governance is gonna start at ten thirty, correct? And so he will go ten thirty to about, to eleven forty-five, wait, ten thirty, eleven forty-five, and then you start at twelve?
Okay.
We're gonna try not to run out.
We may need to calendar them just.
So are you thinking you might need more time for finance?
Well, no, I'm not asking for more, we'll move through things, but I just wanted to mostly allow staff time to switch.
I know.
It seems to be.
It is, I know, I love it that we meet on one day, but it is, it is a little challenge.
Yeah, okay. So there's a question. When I was at the last student advisory board meeting in December, I was talking with some of the students, and some of them, many of them had not been born when certain things had taken place, right? I've mentioned before, just in retrospect, oh, the district cost factor hasn't been adjusted since before our students were born. Well, I've been thinking a lot about the Moore decision in two thousand and seven, and we are now creating a budget for FY twenty-five. Josh can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm guessing that the Moore decision, when it was written in June of two thousand and seven, which said that at this time the plaintiffs had failed to demonstrate that the state hadn't, wasn't allocating money correctly at that time. I think a lot of the members of the class of two thousand and twenty-five were either newborns or had not yet been born. So the phrase "at this time", that was a lifetime ago.
Yeah.
For Josh and thousands of his colleagues. So I just, it was one of these thought bubbles that surfaced out of conversation with our students. So it may be time for the state to consider whether or not our funding is adequate, or whether it's inadequate, whether the resources are not sufficient to accord children a meaningful opportunity to be educated.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
Yes, I appreciate all of the conversations this evening, particularly about the budget, and sadly, all of the additional opportunities that our students are at risk of losing. So that's hard to hear, but I hope the community's listening. I hope they're willing to step up and advocate for education of our students, and I hope they will. Our legislators will be hearing from many of them here shortly when they're back in session, so. Back to that time of year where every board meeting is just really, really heavy and difficult. Our communications, I appreciate you mentioning the upcoming committee meetings. Our communications meeting, correct, starts at one?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so finance, governance, ten thirty, finance, noon, communications at one, and is that, that's all correct? Okay, awesome, and.
Ish.
Ish. I love the ish, I work under ish. I believe it was Finn that mentioned, was it an expo coming up, or?
Middle school.
Can you, if you would, please give details so the community knows.
So, on Saturday, we're having an expo for our teachers that are mostly looking at moving into the middle school. And so we're having lots of principals and teachers and stuff doing presentations, and then those teachers are able to ask questions about what it is to be a middle school teacher, because we do have a number of sixth-grade teachers that probably will move into middle school, and so we want to give them the opportunity to go explore and see what that looks like. So we're doing that this Saturday, and not, not this Saturday, next Saturday. And what's the times on that? Nine till noon at Clark Middle School, next Saturday, I'm a week ahead. So, really looking at providing them the best opportunity to see if that's something that they would feel comfortable with, and then also looking at, like, even the the content areas that they'd be interested in teaching. So really getting them the ability to dive into those.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate that. One last thing I wanted to share, I was talking to Mr. Anderson earlier, sharing that I've noticed the efforts putting, that student nutrition is putting into trying to provide additional options, some really good-looking, healthy options that that they're working on. Anyways, I know that there's a lot of work being done, and as I stated, I I spend way too much time in the past in elementary school, because I'm used to the phrase "caught being good", and so I wanted to throw a shout-out to a department that's caught being good, so to speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Beck, you have any closing comments?
Yes, I've been taking notes throughout this whole meeting, and I know for sure that I have a lot to relay back to the next meeting. With that said, I would like to keep true to my promise to Member Donnelly for his question from the beginning of the meeting. The other two resolutions that we're gonna discuss is, one, the Region Spirit Award, which is basically students calling for the award process at the ASOG conferences to be less biased and more systematic. And the other resolution that we will discuss is Eagle River High School's policy recommendation to like, in essence, not allow those students, or out-of-state transfer students to mess with the valedictorian positions of the students within districts, so that there's a set policy so that they're kind of balanced equally with each other, instead of having like a student from, let's say, California with like a four-point-eight, which would not directly translate to a four-point-eight here. And that is something that we will be discussing. We will also have Chugiak, Diamond, Girdwood, and Northern Lights giving a presentation on their schools, and basically their highlights and their values, and some of the key qualities of their schools. And that is going along with other standard agenda items for our next meeting, and that is what we were expecting.
All right, thank you. All right, Member Donnelly, top that.
Josh, really, thank you very much for that, that's really.
That, that's really interesting. So we're, we're looking at some increases nationally in COVID. And I think we really need to look back at how we handled COVID in this district when we went through that period of time. Initially, and most of the board members weren't here then, we, the district adopted a matrix, a threat matrix, that I strongly objected to at the time, because I thought it was too pro-closing schools. And, and given the, the, the much reduced impact of COVID on younger people, it seemed strict, really inappropriate at the time. It took quite a few months before the Department of Health actually ordered the district not to use that matrix anymore, because it was designed for nursing homes and had no relevancy and no proper utilization for a school district. But be that as it may, I think now it's starting to become more and more recognized among public health experts, including Dr. Francis Collins, who managed the National Institute of Health from 2009 to 2021, that the closure of the schools was, was too draconian at the time. It was a mistake. And we need to keep that in mind if anything, God forbid, happens again with COVID. And, and take the words of Dr. Collins into consideration, that he and his colleagues paid insufficient attention to the collateral damage caused by restrictions on educational activity. So, and subsequent evaluations by Simon Fraser University, they evaluated eighty studies done worldwide on the effects of, of lockdowns. And only twenty out of the eighty concluded there was any positive effect, and even that was minor. One of the, the people who wrote the paper determined that such policies were possibly, quote, "one of the greatest peacetime policy failures ever". So I want to keep that in mind if we re, have to reface COVID threat again, that, that we'd be very, very concerned with ever closing down our schools again.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Member President. Wanted to express appreciation for our board members here tonight. A bunch of tough conversations. And, and I think the reframing, and, and, and President, thank you for continually reframing our budget guidance as guidance, as a starting point for a continued conversation. You know, I know Member Lessons isn't interested in cutting sports. I know Member Donnelly would keep the middle school model if we had adequate funding, or maybe not. But at least he would give it more thought. I, well, we, we dealt with a, a ton of different topics tonight. And I think we, we did well in providing a direction for administration to go to, so we can continue our budget process next month. With that said, I also wanted to express appreciation for Anchorage Assembly tonight, who identified during one of our Roberts Rules breaks, did pass our joint resolution supporting an increase to the base student allocation overwhelmingly. And if they haven't already, I anticipate we'll seriously consider our bond proposition as well. And so it's nice to be reminded that we do have partners in the state. We just need a few more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Higgins?
Listening to the student tonight play reminded me when I first got on the board, that corner over there would always have a choir or other musicians before the board started. And it would really be very entertaining, and it gave them a chance to showcase what they were doing. I really liked it. We ran into a problem, because the music, you're supposed to have permission to play it, because you're on TV, and that got to be an issue. So they finally pulled back, and that's why they stopped it. But we also had a lot more employee and staff recognitions during the board meetings early on. And we did that a lot, because there's a lot of good things going on in school board, a lot of things that kids are achieving, a lot of things that should get recognized by, by staff. And we just don't do that right now. And I, and I miss that. And I think that that's a disservice to the kids and it's a disservice to the staff, not to give more recognition publicly to what they're doing. It's talking about the good things going on in school district, things that are being accomplished. We've got the, for Vandy Penn is done by a student within the Anchorage School District. Be nice to come in and have him talk or show it. There's all kinds of things that are going on there. When I listened to that student play, and I really enjoyed that, I kind of miss the fact that we aren't giving students more of a showcase with the board and recognition and the staff. And I hope that somewhere along this line, we go in that direction. So I appreciate your decision to come forward and doing it. That was really cool. And it made quite a bit of difference. I also appreciate the comments, passionate at times by parents for their kids. And when you're passionate about kids and trying to get the best you can from school district, that's a lot to be proud of. So I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, just like to remind everybody of the meetings that are coming up. I do have one question, though, for the board. We, we need to finalize our goals and guardrails. We have had several wonderful discussions. I'd like to recommend that we do this on, on the 24th or the 25th of January. And I'm kind of looking back at Dr. Johnson, make sure she's going to be back in town on the 24th or 25th. Okay. Or send somebody. Board members? Can you? I think, not quite done. I, I need a date. I need a date, because we got to get this done before we, and I want it to be done before we finalize the budget.
Do you have times?
And, and I'm open to suggestions for time. I know half of us work. And the other half of us, some of us get paid. That's true. So I would say three to five, if that works? Or do you want to do later after the workday and do like 5:30 to 7:30? Midday is fine? Huh? Three to five?
Three to five is the worst.
That's the worst? Okay. So, one to three? It's a, it's a workday, it's a Wednesday? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't think so. Do we have a retreat coming up? Oh, well, forget I said anything. Just forget I said anything. The, the problem, though, is Dr. Johnson won't be back in town.
The retreat's on Friday.
The retreat is on the 19th and the 20th. And so, but, Dr. Johnson, you can just send, send, you got a great team, so. Unless you want to call in from where you going, Hawaii? And you deserve it. You deserve it. How did I miss that? The 19th, that's like next week? Oh, my. Okay, 19th and 20th, thank you. So we will do, we'll finish up our goals work on the 19th and the 20th. So on the 19th, we will be at what time? Is it five to seven? Three to, three to, three to seven? Okay, America, you get to plan your first retreat, girl. Here it is.
Oh, three to seven?
Three to seven. And then? Nine to four. Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Okay, so with that.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Moved in second to adjourn? Any opposition? Hearing seen none? We are adjourned. Who seconded that?
Andy was asked with me.
Oh, Andy. Oh, Jesus. So that's good, we have that retreat.